If you'll excuse us just a moment, we are expecting one more person, so we're hoping that they'll show up. We just want to give them a couple more minutes in case something happened traffic-wise. I mean, not half an hour or anything like that, we just want to give just a few moments. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the zoning board appeals of the city of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns -- sorry, excuse me, she's not here. Matthew Rogers, sorry, Beth McLennan, and Andrew Gallimore. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here from city staff are Melissa Klotz, Dennis Marino, Ken Cox, Susan Gutterly, and Wally Bobquidz. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After the applicant or appellant has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or appellant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the sign-up sheet that is at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it's imperative that you speak at a microphone so that your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Looking at our agenda tonight, our first order of business is approval of the meeting minutes of April 23rd, 2013. Were there any corrections to the draft that was supplied? None? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve our meeting minutes for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013, as drafted.
All those in favor, say aye. I am sorry, second? Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
I was prepared, like, had it in my ear that she'd already said it, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. The minutes are approved. Next on our agenda, we do not have any unfinished business, so we are carrying on to new business this week. And Melissa, if you could read in for 1428 Main Street.
Jonathan Heck, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to retain an illegally-located playhouse. The applicant requests a side yard setback of two feet where five feet is required. Zoning code section 6463B23. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Spark recommends approval of major zoning relief to retain the playhouse with a two-foot side yard setback where five feet is required. City staff recommends that, if the zoning board chooses to grant the requested zoning relief, the variance should be conditioned so that the playhouse be removed by a specific date, no later than 2017, as intended by the applicant. Documents submitted for the record pertaining to this case include: variance application submitted April 4th, 2013; standards form; zoning analysis; plat of survey dated October 10th, 2004; image of playhouse; petition of support submitted by applicant; images of other playhouses submitted by applicant; zoning violation notices; administrative adjudication notice and determination; final zoning violation notice; circuit court determination; aerial view of property; zoning map of property; image of property; and Spark meeting minutes of April 24th, 2013.
Thank you. And at this time, if I could swear in anyone who plans to or thinks they may wish to speak with us regarding this matter? Yes, anyone who will be speaking at all, thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. And now, if we could have the applicant up? And sir, if you could state for the record your name and address?
Hi, my name's Jonathan Heck, I live at 1428 Main Street in Evanston, Illinois.
And if you could, I believe you have a play structure that's currently in place, so if you could maybe run us through the reasoning for the relief?
Sure. Well, I built the playhouse with my kids, it was our summer project. A lot of parents take their kids to different camps. We spent the summer building this tree fort. They really wanted a tree fort, and so we did. We located it where we located it because it was in the rear of the property. It was kind of out of the way. And it gives us, you know, the lot sizes in Evanston are pretty small. It gives us enough room to still throw the ball or do whatnot. Also, you know, I just am pretty active around the community, you know. I was an officer for ASO last year. I know a lot of people in the community. And a lot of our friends had built tree forts and play areas in the same way, to the side of the lot, because, you know, when you put it five feet away from the property lines, there's not a lot of room left to do things in your yard. So, yeah, I didn't even think that there would be an ordinance for such a thing. And, you know, I'd seen so many. And so we went ahead and built it. And the reason why we chose to build it as we did, with concrete footings and so forth, is that I have three kids, and the structures that you find at, like, the Great Escape or whatnot, they don't have footings, and they're not secure, sound structures if you get three, four kids up in the structure, in my opinion. Now, you know, I -- my neighbors complained about it. And, you know, I went in front of zoning, and I went in front of building inspections. And Jeff Murphy was really nice, and Melissa, and Travis in zoning. Everybody was really nice and tried to help long, and they kind of agreed, you know. I went in and sat down with Melissa and Travis and Jeff. And Jeff said, "Hey, this is a really sound structure." You know, "I did the same thing for my kids in Glenview." And he thought it was a great structure. Travis and Melissa said, "Hey, you know, if we don't hear anything again or from a neighbor with grievance about the fort, mum's the word." You know, "We're not going to do anything." So I went on building the fort with my kids, for everybody to see in the backyard, my six, eight, and nine-year-olds, learning how to set plumb lines and measure and work with angles. And so we did, but there was a second complaint. And so, you know, we went to court, you know, we were fined. I appealed. It's in front of Cook County Circuit Court. Evanston has its lawyers on it. Yeah, I wonder how much this has cost the taxpayers. See, my problem is, I have at least thirty or forty tree forts that are on property lines just within our district, not within more than a six-block radius of my house. And nobody else is being brought before the council. My problem is the, you know, you want to make a law, you want to make an ordinance, all good and fine. That's one thought. The second part of that is the follow-up. How are you going to implement it? Are you going to implement it based on neighbors' grievances? Is that what it is? And then litigation and fines and fees of taxpayers who already pay enough? This is a kid's tree fort. What about individual liberty here in Evanston? Now, I understand, we need rules. And, you know, my understanding of freedom and government in a free society 101 is that we do not make laws or rules that would jeopardize in any way individual liberty, unless it interferes with the greatest good for the greatest number of people.
Can I help you out, Mr. Heck, for a second?
You sure can.
I don't want to cut you short at all, but I do want to help you focus towards what will help us, which is, I'm sure you kind of looked through the standards and responded to the standards.
I have, but I want to tell the council because--
But we don't have any ability to, we don't have any ability to, this board has no ability to do anything about the enforcement or the--
But that's constitutional, and it needs to be thought out about--
But we don't have anything, but that's the, the council can, the council can do stuff about that, but we can't do anything about that, we have no authority whatsoever to do anything about that.
The board and the city of Evanston needs to know that when you make a zoning ordinance that is unfairly implemented, the cost for us taxpayers is exorbitant. Now, I guess that through litigation and so forth, this tree fort right here, that we stopped, you know, we painted it last week so it matches the house, has probably cost the taxpayers between $30,000 and $40,000 already.
Unfortunately, this board neither makes the zoning code or has the ability to declare how it's enforced. We do neither of those things, we just interpret it, unfortunately, with the way things are kind of put together. So we can't change the zoning code, nor can we make somebody enforce--
Oh, goodie!
Nor can we make somebody enforce it in a certain way, we can only interpret it, so--
Okay, well, I'm done then, I guess. So we built the tree fort, and, you know, we think it's a good tree fort.
What would help us is if we kind of understood why you think, why you think it needs to stay where it is.
Well, it needs to stay where it is because it's on concrete footings, and the only way to move it without doing structural damage is to move it with a crane, which was, which would not be cost-effective. We couldn't afford to do it, my family couldn't. We would have to take it down. And so, that's, that's, that's that. Now, we had a petition, I gave it to Melissa. Everyone else in our neighborhood that can see the fort stands by and assigns a petition saying, "Hey, we're good with the fort, we're only going to keep the fort until 2017. My kids will grow, it's a temporary thing." And so that's that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like I have a couple people that did sign up, definitely to talk to us. It's Rebecca Grobel. Did I say that right? If you could officially give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Grobel. My address is 1432 Main Street, right next door to the play structure. I do have some photos to submit, is that okay?
Yeah, that's okay. And when you get back there, I'm just going to run through a couple of questions for you here. For the record, I have four sheets of photographs, which I'm going to call Appellants A. And ma'am, did you take these pictures?
Yes, I did.
And to the best of your knowledge, they accurately represent the conditions that were in place?
Yes.
And would you care to briefly describe to us what it is that you've given us pictures of, then?
They are pictures that show the size of the play structure. Basically, you could probably fit a Mini Cooper on the top level and on the bottom level. It shows the height to the best that I could do. It is taller than my privacy fence, and my privacy fence is taller than myself. The photos also show Mr. Heck's yard from my yard and from the alley, which shows that it could have been placed elsewhere. The photos also show how close it is. I believe it is less than two feet, because if I stick my arm through the fence, I can touch it, and I have room here. And it shows its placement right on top of the patio.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much, I think it, oh, and then it also shows nasty comments that he had written on the side of--
Okay. Did you have anything else to say?
The message, yes, I have, may I read this?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Basically, I oppose zoning relief for the play structure for the following reasons. It's too close to my property considering the height and width. It has disrupted our privacy. It has affected the future saleability of the home. I wonder, I mean, I think Jonathan did answer this, that if it does stay, it will be taken down. But one of the concerns that I did have is that it is easy to enclose and use as a shed. While it is not a hardship, it was not a hardship for Mr. Heck in the process of building it, it has been a hardship for us between the nasty messages he's written on it and the disruption of the privacy and enjoyability of our backyard. And in fact, I feel like we wouldn't even be here tonight if it wasn't for the fact that Mr. Heck did not heed my concerns when he first started building it. This was before the structure was even built. I noticed that there were some cement going in. And initially, I thought that he was going to be putting in, I mean, a garden. You know, maybe he was going to be putting in some sort of garden. And then when I talked to him, I found out that he was building a play structure. I expressed my concern about how close it was. It was right on the patio, my patio. And, you know, are you making sure that it follows code? my patio, and, you know, are you making sure that it follows code? And he assured me that he knew the code, that he was good friends with whoever was in charge and of those things, and that he was indeed following code. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there a Jim Janick? Sir, I'm not sure that I swear you in at the beginning, did I?
Jim Janisek.
Janisek, sorry.
I'm at 1500 Main Street.
Can I swear you in? I'm not sure that I did at the beginning. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Janisek, I live at 1500 Main Street, which is next door to Rebecca Grobel and one door from Mr. Heck.
Okay.
I'm peripherally involved in this, I suppose, I got the notice in the mail, I should come over here, I came to listen. I just have a quick question about the evidence presented. There seems to be a lot of like, stuff flying around about playhouses and what's legal and what's not and what's been, you know, what's appropriate. Do these other, do you, can you answer the question, or perhaps Mr. Heck can answer the question, about the evidence presented about these thirty-five other playhouses that all apparently are fine, but his is not? I'm wondering if the only difference is the footings.
I don't know that, that, I, well, Melissa will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that what is at issue is that in general, there is a restriction regarding the proximity of the play structure regardless of footing or not footing, correct?
Correct, and relating to the other play structures that were mentioned, some of them are located in legal locations, others may not be. The way the city currently operates is on a complaint-based process, we don't have the staff to go and patrol the city, we have not received a formal complaint regarding any of the other ones, so currently they are not the issue at hand.
Okay, sorry, thank you, because I was under the impression it had something specifically to do with the footings prior to this.
No, I mean, there, unfortunately, there's so many issues between property maintenance and et cetera, et cetera, throughout the city, that we do have people that review those things, but there is only, there are only so many bodies for so much work and we have similar scenarios that we, you know, fight to work through in terms of signage and things like that when people put it up in non-conformant scenarios, so...
Okay, so it's, thank you, it's not specifically about the footings, it could be a freestanding structure, if it was a freestanding structure of just sitting on the grass in the same spot, the issue would still be the same, correct?
The issue would still be to try to move it over.
It's got to get, well, according to code, it should be moved five feet away from the property line.
Right.
Regardless of if it has footings or not.
Right, so, I mean, it's a little bit more challenging in the fact that it's tied to something and you can't just take, you know, six big guys and slide it over or whatever, so...
All right, well, I'd just like to conclude, thank you for answering my questions, I don't really have anything else, I'd just like to conclude by saying, I have spoken to Mr. Heck, not a lot, but I, he's my neighbor, so I try and talk to him occasionally, and he seems like a very nice guy and I've complimented him in his yard and his kids, they did a good job landscaping, I like the playhouse, I complimented him on the playhouse. I don't agree with the fact that he went past, you know, did something that's not code and went close to the fence or, you know, whatever it is he's done, and I do recall we did discuss briefly while we were there that, what are you going to do if this, if they tell you, you can't have the thing here? And he goes, well, I guess I'll just have to move it. And I don't think it needs a crane, but I think it could, I mean, I'd be happy to work with Mr. Heck to figure out a way to move it if it comes to that, but I don't think it needs a crane and I would be happy to volunteer to move it on, you know, building piling or something and slide it over or whatever and make, I understand he wants it safe for his kids, but I'm not sure it's quite the ordeal that it's made out to be to move it. It could be slid and new footings put in, so, but again, that's not my call, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your participation. Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up, but was there anybody else who wish to speak with us regarding this proposal? Okay, yeah, you absolutely get a chance to come back up.
I just want to say that when I had my discussion with Mrs. Grobel about what the ordinance was, her comment to me was, is it needs to be at least a foot from the property line? And I didn't know, she's mistaken, I didn't say I knew what the codes were, I didn't, and if I did, I wouldn't be here today. Thank you.
It doesn't matter that he said, she said, doesn't matter if that's the, if that's your comment, okay. And just to clarify, Melissa, since there have been some comments, there are no restrictions apparently in terms of height of play structures or anything of that scenario.
There are not height restrictions specific only to playhouses, so it would fall under the typical accessory structure regulation, which would be twenty feet to the peak.
It's kind of sounding like a trellis. Are there any other comments or questions before we close the record and begin our deliberations? Seeing none, we will close the record and begin our deliberations on this case. Comments?
I have a question for people who work in the architecture industry.
Yes, sir.
Is a building permit required when you pour footings, if you're building a structure on top of those, or is it very, or...
Not per se necessarily, and it's my understanding that at least at this point in time in Evanston, a building permit is not required for this type of structure, so it doesn't exempt it from being compliant with all other things, but a permit itself is not necessarily required. And this structure doesn't, this structure doesn't have swings, but particularly in structures with swings nowadays, it's fairly common to put something, something in to sort of anchor it down because of the tipping effect that can happen. There are several scenarios in terms of what we have sitting before us, leaving it in place, potentially sawing off the bottom where it connects to the concrete and doing new pads and moving it over and making new connections, or taking it apart piecemeal and putting it back together. So there's, those are, would be like the construction scenarios of what might be able to happen. Any comments or thoughts?
You know, I'm certainly sympathetic to the fact that it's going to be a huge effort to relocate it, you know, pouring concrete footings, that's, that's hard. However, I don't see any grounds for a hardship to keep it in its current location. I'm very disappointed by the picture that I saw. That message on the side of the playhouse, I'm very disappointed. I don't, I don't want to sit here and sound like I'm your mom or something, but that kind of dried up my sympathy a little bit, I'll be honest with you. Does the applicant get to look at...
I mean, he can see copies of it, it doesn't, I mean, it's, you know, it's irrelevant to the standards, but, you know...
Okay, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the hardship, I don't see the hardship. It's a, it's a big yard.
Yeah, you know, it is noted that staff did, you know, it is noted that staff did offer to help move the playoffs, I'm assuming that was probably before the foundation or the footings report, and the applicant denied their assistance.
I'm also, I wanted to add one thing, I'm also, I'm also sympathetic to the fact that it's really frustrating for residents to see what they perceive as selective enforcement of an ordinance, I understand that, but, you know, the community also needs to understand that we're all under sort of economic duress here and, you know, talk about cost to the taxpayers, it'd be crazy to have somebody out, like you said, Melissa, patrolling for stuff. So we really, we all depend on you guys to go by the book. So I guess this is, I think this is going to end up being a real lesson in the fact that if you want to do something in Evanston, you need to go find out what the rules are before you start doing it. Well, you, you might have to, you might have to find out how that goes for you in court, but I just, I would really like to state for the record that, you know, it's on the community too, to have some responsibility to understand the laws and the rules and the regulations and then to go by them, so... I don't know, that doesn't really have anything to do with whether or not it's a hardship either, but that's, that's all I've got.
Anything else before we run through the standards? Standard number one, the requested variation will have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of the adjoining properties. I think that certainly the hardship aspect is going to become a key aspect of this deliberation, but it certainly has as well been evidenced that there is concern in terms of the, the height, and I can certainly imagine sort of the, the height and closeness to the fence and I can certainly imagine the elevated noise that would come from that closeness to the property line, that, that would adversely impact the neighboring property with this type of use. Any other thoughts?
I mean, I would agree with everything that you've said.
Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning I guess just by kind of sheer nature of the sort of letter and the space available on the lot to shift or move the structure around, that the answer to this would be no.
I agree.
Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, as I just noted, although we did not talk about it much in terms of, previously in terms of the testimony, it's clear based on the site plans available as part of the packet that there's not a confinement of space on the property with respect to being able to have such a structure, so I don't believe the standard's been met as well.
I'd agree.
I agree.
Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I do believe...
This one's a little bit tough, right?
Yeah, I mean, I do believe it will be somewhat difficult and not easy to, to move the structure over, but I don't think it's an infeasibility.
I would say that it probably would have been easier to do when the initial complaint was filed before the, before the structure was fully complete, and the fact that the applicant continued to build on it, he sort of has created his own hardship on that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Speaking, sorry. Standard number five, the purpose of variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income of the property. I do not believe that this is at all intended to add value to the resale or whatever of the property, so I believe this standard has been met.
I agree.
Agreed.
Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Matt spoke to this somewhat a second before. Since the structure was just built and reviewed partially, partway through, then I can't, cannot see that this standard has been met either.
I agree.
Standard number seven, requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. And based on the analysis of the previous standards, I would say that there, because those have not been met, then therefore this has not been met either, and that the minimum variation would be none, so...
I agree.
Agreed.
With that, we have run through the seven standards for a major variation. Is there a motion?
I would move in the matter 13ZMJV0029 regarding 1428 Main Street, that we deny the requested zoning relief after having walked through the standards, and it sounds like it's going to go back into court after this, so... I will not give further direction to staff to do anything.
Second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried unanimously. We only need four members for a quorum, sir.
Okay. Is that in?
Okay, with that, let me just take a moment here. The next item on our agenda is going to be for 749 Chicago Avenue, and if you could read that into the record, Melissa?
Dan Weiss, Lissy, applies for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Dollop Coffee Company and Hoosier Mama Pie Company at 749 Chicago Avenue. 749 Chicago Avenue is located in the C1A Commercial Mixed-Use District, which requires a special use permit for type-two restaurants to operate, zoning code section 61033. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. City staff recommends that the Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval of this request for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Dollop Coffee Company and Hoosier Mama Pie Company. The applicant will comply with all zoning requirements and meets all of the standards of a special use for this district. Spark also voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay, and if I could have everyone who thinks they may speak to us on this matter be sworn in at this time? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, and if I could have whoever's going to represent you first come up.
Hi, guys.
Hi, can we have your name and address for the record?
Sure, Dan Weiss, 6142 North Kenmore, Chicago.
And, Mr. Weiss, if you could run us through briefly what you're, what you're proposing here?
Sure, so I own Dollop Coffee Company and I have three locations in the city right now, and Craig and Paula here own Hoosier Mama Pie Company, and this is Paul Leisen, he's our designer, just so you know who you're, who's here. So we're looking to open up a, sort of a hybrid coffee bar slash pie universe in this location to make everybody in Evanston really happy. I could go into more detail if you'd like me to, I don't know what you're...
Let's talk about how many, is the Hoosier Mama in a, does it have retail locations at this point?
Yeah, they do, they have one at, near Chicago and, what's the address?
1618 West Chicago.
1618 West Chicago right now, yeah. And then, yeah, I have three locations, one in Striderville, one in the Buena Park neighborhood, and then one in Delmont Clark neighborhood.
Okay. So, as owners then... Okay. So, as owners then, and having multiple locations, presumably you guys will be having a manager, a separate manager for this location?
Certainly.
Okay. And how many staff would you expect to have on premise at your peak time?
Probably eight.
And are we baking pies on-site, or are we selling pies?
Yes. Yeah, definitely.
And I presume, since this is a new structure, this has been adequately taken care of, but there's space at the rear for your trash disposal?
Yeah, yes.
And also for your deliveries? They would be off of the alley space?
Yeah, we're hoping that...
Actually, can I speak to you?
Yeah, please. Okay.
Actually, yeah, if I could get you up here, name, address, on a microphone, all the good stuff.
Hi, I'm Paula Haney, 1411 West Chase Avenue in Chicago. There is an alley to the east of the building, and then a turn-in to a loading dock, that you can actually get a full-size delivery truck into.
Okay. So, all of your deliveries would be off of the alley?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any ballparks in terms of frequency, size of vehicles, that sort of thing?
We'll be getting dairy deliveries every day, and we'll probably be getting deliveries every day. We get most of our produce from the farmer's market, so that's a relatively small vehicle, an extended cab pickup, basically. The dairy deliveries will be, I don't, I don't know the dimensions, maybe a 14, 14-foot truck. The rest of our produce deliveries are a delivery van. The dairy's gonna be the biggest truck that comes in there.
Okay. And what is the situation for parking for your employees?
There is no parking for our employees. Most, most of them don't drive, and we're expecting them to use the train, since we're so close to the station.
And have you guys all become familiar with the city's litter collection plan and garbage pickup plan for special uses? Have you gotten those at all? Sound familiar? No? Okay. So, I'm gonna butcher this, and I'm sure that Melissa will get you copies of it, but is it 250 feet? Okay. So, the litter collection plan is the kind of main one that we would want to focus on at this moment, which basically involves you making sure that one of your staff patrols on a regular basis and picks up any litter within 200 feet of your, of your premise, regardless of whether it's, regardless of source, whether it was from your takeout or somebody else. However it got there, you're making, you know, you're contributing to picking all that up. So that's the, the short version, short version of that. And obviously, garbage pickup is basically, I think you guys should be mostly set, but basically, obviously wanting to make sure that you guys have enough service and frequency to, that we're not piling up into the alley, et cetera.
Right.
And taking care of that. And actually, I don't know if this is from Melissa or Dennis, but this came up a little bit the other day, in situations where we don't have parking garages nearby, and we have these facilities on major frontages. What is our, what is our goal in terms of employee parking? Like, are we, I mean, I know residents don't necessarily want it in the residential areas, but we probably also don't necessarily want it on the major frontage either. Do we, are we giving a direction in that? Are we, have we talked about that?
Dennis Moreno, manager of planning and zoning. We, we have talked with the applicant about that, as she's indicated tonight. She indicated the same thing at site plan. They expect most of their employees, if not all of them, to come by transit or by bike. Those who come by car, one option is to encourage the applicant to lease space from a local private lot within 1,000 feet, is another option in that regard. But what we've experienced is with these kinds of uses, certainly not every employee's bringing a car.
Okay. So, yeah, certainly, but I guess, are we, are we saying that we're sort of, if we're not dictating leasing, that we're just sort of gonna let whatever happens, happen? We're not trying to tell them that they should be parking on a side street, or et cetera?
Right. We often discourage employee parking, certainly in the residential area nearby. If there are employees that'll be parking, we would expect them to be in the commercial area. The often, I mean, certainly at ZBA, you can make a recommendation to council related to a condition about, you know, potentially leasing spaces in a nearby private lot. My only concern about that would be the degree of that, and don't want to impose a significant cost on the business.
Yeah, I don't know if that scenario quite applies to this situation. I was just wondering if we were trying to leave sort of some of the thoroughfare parking spaces free
Right.
For potential patrons of all of the businesses, I guess.
Yeah. Excuse me. Another option to pursue, Steve Ross is here from Amelie, the developer of the project. They are meeting all the parking requirements through the PDE process, so the other issue may be that they may not have sufficient parking, but they may have more than enough parking, I should say, for the residential, but I believe they segregate the residential from the retail spaces that they have. So they do have some retail spaces for customers as part of the PDE requirement.
Okay, so there are retail spaces for customers, but customers only?
Correct.
Sorry, one more question, not to belabor this, but is that, so normally in retail, parking requirements are not segregated between employees and, and patrons?
That's correct.
From a zoning, from a zoning basis, so?
Correct.
How has that applied to the PDE? Were they allowed to say as part of the PDE that it was just patron parking?
The parking that's in the PDE, the parking requirements are to meet the residential requirements principally, but then there also is significant retail parking as well, that I believe is commensurate with what the zoning requirement is in that regard.
Which?
So, we don't distinguish between employee parking and customer parking, basically.
So that should mean that employee parking should be able to be as part of that?
Well, depends on the demand of the retail, you know, patronage as well. But there is a potential yes. The answer to your question is yes, that could be accommodated perhaps. But that's also something that could be worked out, you know, once you make your recommendation to city council. We could have a discussion with the applicant, also with the developer, before it goes to city council.
Yes.
Yeah.
Since you're posing something on me. My name's Steve Ross, 1060 Holfelder Glenco. I represent ownership. I am the developer of Amelie Evanston. Been working on the project since 2007, 2008, when we, along with staff, the plant commission, and the city council envisioned a renewal of a, what was a very tired stretch of Chicago Avenue, to create 214 luxury rental units in a mixed-use, truly transit-oriented development. We're across the street, directly across the street from two train stations, the CTA station and also the metro station. We have 8,000 square feet of retail, and we have live-work units also in our community. In terms of parking, our parking ratio is 1.33, which entirely complies with the underlying zoning. We have 24 retail parking spaces, very conveniently located to the rear of the retail, and then all of the residential parking is private, gated for our tenants. As a business matter, we want the retail to be successful. The city wants the retail to be successful, and as a result, we want the retail spaces to be available for customers, not for employees. And so, from a contractual standpoint, with our tenant and ourselves, we're gonna request and enforce that the parking that's adjacent to the retail not be for the employees, but for customers. I think that is the spirit of what we're trying to achieve here. And by the way, I strongly, and greatly find this use to be consistent with the vision that we had, and that's the vision of the plant commission and the city council, and extensive neighborhood involvement in our PDE process to bring this type of user to this location. We have also created, if you've been by the community at the Chicago and Kedzie, and I suggest, I welcome that you, you come visit, all of you come visit, because it's an amazing building and a mixed-use community with a corner pocket park that we created in the spirit of the Chandler Corner Pocket Park. And always envisioned this type of use, this exciting, hip, wonderful neighborhood use, to take advantage of that pocket park, with outdoor dining, which is something that is to be featured with this user. So I just wanted to make that statement, how excited we are, and how this specific use is so consistent with the vision for this project. And it, and it is a revitalization of this entire corridor. And I believe that our project spurred additional development in this corridor, including Walgreens and Trader Joe's. So, I can go on and on, but that...
Have I missed any of the?
Hours of operation?
Oh, yes, thank you. I was like, I'm trying to go through and getting distracted by one thing. What are your, what are your, at least for right now, your initial proposed hours of operation?
We are still figuring that out, but we know we want to be open in the morning for commuters.
Okay.
That may be as early as, as 6:00 a.m. It depends on, need to do a little research on that. And in the evenings, we would like to have light dinner service. We do savory pies as well.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock is the, the starting point now. Of course, we're gonna, we'll see how that works. If it's, you know, if nobody shows up, we'll close earlier.
All right. Well, if I took a stab out in the dark, those are the two exact hours that I would have started with, too, before we start discussions, so. All right. So I think we're in the ballpark. Thanks, that, that helps that. Okay, I think that's that. Do we want to talk about hours really quick then, before we close out? Yeah, I'm fine with 10, too.
I mean, don't we wanna, don't the hours travel with use? Don't we want to leave? Don't, didn't we decide that we usually leave some leeway for?
Yeah, although...
Potential later service and...
This is, I don't know, given the location, this is a probably pretty close, I mean, I maybe would, if things were going well and there wasn't an issue, I maybe would consider something a little bit later, but I don't know. This is kind of what stuck out in my head, given the location.
Oh, how late's Firehouse stay up until?
Well, Firehouse is a bar, but it's...
Or what's this, Campagnal, or O'Neal?
It's not that, like, it's not open till like 2:00 or any, like?
No, 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 no.
Firehouse closes a lot earlier than you think, 'cause I think it closed on me at like 11:00 on a Friday night one time.
Right.
It's pretty early.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just my idea about, about the hours, I think what usually happens with, when you open up a place like this, is that, where like Paula said, we're gonna learn, we're gonna know pretty quickly?
And, and these aren't, just to clarify, these are not to say that you have to stay open?
Gotcha. Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, this is just giving you...
Okay, cool, okay.
What we do is try to apply outer limits, and sometimes somebody says that they're gonna close at 6:00, but given the use and location, we might say, okay?
Sure.
Okay, you have till 10:00 or something. So we may, like, sometimes we even expand upon what somebody asks for.
Great.
Quite a bit, just depending on what we're trying to do is set the outer limits.
True, 'cause we don't, we don't exactly know, we're gonna, since we're gonna be in this Amelie building, it, it might turn out that people who live in the building are utilizing the space late, and are coming down and doing work and using our, using, you know, serving as a cafe. Or it might, we might figure out that people want to go on dates and eat pie and, you know, and relax. We don't really know, but...
Yeah, and so I think, I guess, when I thought of it first, I, this is kind of what came to mind. I know that, like, the, not that you're Starbucks, but a block away, you know, they close at 9:00, just to give you a frame of reference of like that neighborhood.
Firehouse, by the way, stays open till 10:00 most nights, and then 11:00 on Friday and Saturday night.
Okay.
Something like that.
That's the flavor of the neighborhood.
Something that like, yeah. No, that's, that's my old neighborhood. I don't know. I'm just, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to shut that use, that use, that particular location down too early, I guess.
Yeah, no, yeah.
You want to come there late, don't you?
I would be, I would be frying with 11:00 on Friday and Saturday to be consistent with, you know, picking something up after dinner or whatever, too. So, okay. Had that discussion, run through some of the other stuff. I don't think there's any more discussion on that. Any other questions? For the record, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak with us regarding the 749 Chicago Avenue project? Note for the record that there are none. Anything further before we close the record and begin our deliberations?
Is there anything else you need to know about what we're doing? I don't know if that was enough or not for you.
Is the food service primarily just pies, or is it actual dinner as well?
It'll be, I think what Paula has in mind is, I don't know if you want to describe anything, but I think, yeah, sure, let, let Paula.
Sorry, this is the fun, really fun part for me. We do make sweet and savory pies. We are imagining a sandwich menu that would go from lunch through dinner, savory pies. We make little hand pies. We would do a little appetizer plate of that, not to get too specific on you, but cheese plate, things like that.
But it's kind of a substantial amount of food, then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think I'm pretty good. I don't see anything that extends unusually in terms of the service that's intended to be provided, so I don't think I have any other questions. So with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Standard number one, the requested special use is one of the special uses listed in the zoning ordinance for that district. And the special use for a type-two restaurant is? Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. As alluded to, as part of the testimony, this project, the, the project that, of the proposed location here, has gone extensively through plant commission and city council, and this type of project, this type of proposal was certainly intended, intended and hoped for in this location, so I believe that standard has been met as well. Standard number three, the requested special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. I think this is certainly our first special use within the, the new development, and there are not too many special uses in that immediate vicinity, actually, for that ma- And there are not too many special uses in that immediate vicinity, actually, for that matter. So, and given that this is a special use that we're looking for in that type of location, I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Potentially quite opposite, having an additional amenity, and certainly filling the space at that key location could only help to add to the livelihood and potential desirability of that neighborhood. So, I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number five, the requested special use can adequately be served by public facilities and services, given that the, given that everything with respect to the building that it's going into is new in terms of water sewer, et cetera, that certainly has been met. And while trash will be from the rear, there's certainly availability and space around the property for all services to maintain their access, et cetera. Standard number six, the requested special use will not cause undue traffic congestion. I certainly think that it's true that most of the patrons, a lot of the patrons coming here will be walking from upstairs or coming out of the neighborhoods, both to the east and west of this location. Although some people may kind of, may drive and stop in, but I do not believe that it would cause undue traffic congestion within the area. Also, as noted, as part of the testimony, it is fairly close to both the CTA and metro stations, and is on Chicago Avenue with available bus service as well. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Since this is in a brand-new building, it's not quite applicable in this situation. So, that standard has also been met. Standard number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, it's sort of a brand-new building, and we can't go, I don't know, I don't even remember what was there before, but it was a building. So, there was nothing environmental there before either. So, no environmental features to preserve there before either. So, I believe that standard has been met as well. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the planned development process. And it certainly appears that that standard has been met as well, and is going into an existing planned development, which has made its way through the city. And there are no other locations of these businesses in the city of Evanston, but we certainly hope that, given their experience, things should go smoothly once they, in terms of compliance, once they move here. With that, we have run through the standards for a special use. The only other kind of note that I would throw in, which isn't necessarily specific to this project, but I think, to me, is a conversation that I would like to have clarified, and maybe it needs to be considered as part of City Council with this proposal, is that we have a zoning ordinance that applies parking requirements in a generic format, applying to consumers and/or employees. And then, does that allow, that generic applicability, does that allow for restrictions to say that employees can't be parking in those spaces that we required them to provide in the first place? And if so, and we don't want employees out on the streets, I guess, we kind of have this... I feel like we have this residential versus commercial parking location. Like, are we... And we should have guidance in terms of, are we saying that the employees should be parking on Chicago Avenue preferably? Or are we saying they should be preferably on a residential street? It seems like we should be giving some guidance in one way or another. So, I think that conversation should be had. With that, is there a recommendation with respect to this particular application?
I'm sorry, do we want to clarify the hours?
Yeah, we'll do that in...
It'll be an amendment.
In the matter 13Z, MJV 0030, regarding 749 Chicago Avenue, I would move that we recommend approval to City Council of the special use type two restaurant with the following conditions placed on it. That the applicant pay attention and enforce the litter collection plan and the garbage pickup as outlined by the city. That the hours of operation for the establishment be beginning every morning at 6:00 a.m. and closing Sunday through Thursday at 10:00 p.m., and on Fridays and Saturdays at 11:00 p.m. And we'll encourage the discussion by saying, no staff parking on any public street. And we'll let City Council decide how they want to handle that.
Second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. The motion is carried unanimously, so you'll be recommended forward to City Council. And with that, we have nothing else on our agenda, I believe. Are there any other discussions before we close?
Just to note that the next zoning board meeting is May 21st, and we do have a full agenda with lots of exciting cases.
All right. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.